Good evening, everyone. We're going to start our meeting. Is that you? Okay, Eliana, roll call, please.
Trusty McAvoy. Trusty Wells.
Here.
Trusty Lawson.
Here.
Vice President Marquez.
Yeah.
President Diaz-Loco.
Here. Welcome, everyone. If you're at home, we'd like to welcome you as well as those of you that are here in person. If you wish to speak to the board, if you're at home, please submit a Google, your name on the Google form. Si estás en casa y quieres hablar con nosotros esta noche, por favor, pon tu nombre en el documento de Google de la tarjeta de alto voz. Si necesitas interpretación, por favor llama al 978-990-5137 y presiona 8377041 y el número, la sigla del número. Okay, so if you need Spanish translation, we will provide it for you. Just fill out a card and pass it over here to Eliana. You will be given three minutes unless otherwise noted. Please remember that items that are on the consent items, part of the agenda will be voted on simultaneously with one motion. So if you would like to speak to us about any of those issues, please let us know so we can pull it off. And please silence your phones and other electronic devices. Thank you. So do we have any changes or modifications to the agenda?
Yeah, I'd suggest that we move the second meeting, so 10.2 to 10.5 to consent. There wasn't a whole lot of discussion when we did the first reading. Some clarification on the volunteer one, in case anyone wanted to bring that up. Also, at that 10.6, the addendum for the Adelante Salvi Spanish Immersion Schools Measure U, we can move that to consent as well.
Any objections? No? Okay, we will do that then. Any other changes or additions? None? Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, Mike.
A second.
And Elisa's second. All those in favor? Right? Eliana, do we have any oral communication this evening?
We do not.
Okay, let's move right along, Ben, to the bond consent items. Would someone like to move this item? So moved.
Second.
And Cecilia, all those in favor? All right. No action items for the bonds, so moving on to 8.1, first reading and discussion of Board Policy 3311 bids.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the Board Policy Committee meeting on this particular item. The first board policy in reading was brought to us by Don Diaz. Thank you for being on the call. It's well done. And it would be wonderful if he could field any particular questions, but this particular board policy is in regards to changes about bid limits for public projects that are applicable to school districts specifically. Are any questions?
No questions or comments? No? Okay. Well, I guess you guys did a great job, Wendy.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 8.2 is the first reading and discussion of Board Policy 5117 Inter-District Attendance.
Okay, we are bringing tonight two board policies for review. The first one within 8.2, inter-district transfer. And aside from reflecting new laws regarding assistance for students to transfer who might be victims of bullying or regarding students that have active military parents and so forth, there is other particular language in here that really defines and lays out the elements in order to warrant an inter-district transfer. However, this time recognizing that the district is currently not accepting inter-district transfers. So I really wanted to open this particular board policy and the subsequent one for discussion tonight. So this would be, unless Dr. Baker, you want to add anything?
The only thing that I wanted to add is just to make sure that this is the item that we have, not only this policy, but the one following, to really have discussion if you have any questions, any doubts. Because as we move forward, especially with the next policy, there is going to be a change. So this is the opportunity on both of these policies to have a discussion, to determine if you want to change anything, if you want to look at any item further and wish for us to bring back some other references for you or what other school districts are doing in this manner that have changed. Let us know.
Yeah, and I might add, just from the board policy perspective, because we actually spent quite a bit of time on these two policies, Janet, Wendy and I did. And we also met with Dr. Baker at least a couple of times. We got his input. I know we got input from various principals and other administrators. So there are, you know, I think the inter-district attendance is probably more straightforward. So I don't know, we may want to, I mean, they're related to one another, but it may be on the intra-district. I think we just want to highlight one of the areas that may be the most controversial, just so, you know, we all have an opportunity to really think about it and make sure that that's the direction that we want to go forward. And I would be interested if we have any comments, you know, from the public as well. This is the first reading, so the idea is to really share it with the community and our other board members who are not on the Board Policy Committee and get input. But do know that we spent a fair amount of time, and this is reflective upon particularly the superintendent and the district's desire in terms of the intra-district transfer. But there's conversation to be had, so we're certainly open to feedback and ideas. And we want, you know, at this point, we really want community input as well. And I don't know, Janet, if you want to add anything else from board perspective?
No, I don't think I have anything to add, especially on the inter-district one. But like you said, we did have several meetings around this. We've spent quite a bit of time on it. So we'd love feedback from everybody. Your thoughts?
And actually, just one other thing I'll say is we did look at the CSBA template. And then I believe we also referred quite closely to the Sequoia Union High School District, because they've been a basic aid district a lot longer than we have. And I'm trying to think if there was any other districts we kind of, I think it was mostly that district's board policy.
I think, if I'm not mistaken, what we came up with is actually really closely aligned with the high school.
Yes, it is. It is.
Yeah.
Okay. Enough background.
And then just to clarify, I mean, many of these changes were just updating to reflect the law around transportation, right? I mean, for this one particularly, I match on the next one. There's a few other things. Okay.
Well, in this one, we did clarify that, given, you know, we clarified, given our financial changes being now community-supported basic aid, that at this point, we're not currently accepting intra-district transfers unless granted by the superintendent and governing board. So it would be a special case-by-case basis.
Well, it looks like you guys did a very good job again. Thank you for that. I don't have any questions either. I'm with Mike. It was mostly the updates from CSBA. So let's move on to the next one, 8.3, reading and discussion of Board Policy 5116.1, intra-district open enrollment.
Thank you. So this particular board policy really affects to the heart our school of choice transfer system and transfers in general from neighborhood schools. And so aside from reflecting additional updates and laws, which we discussed in just the previous policy, there is, I'm interested in a discussion at hand. We once again spent multiple meetings and reached out to our attorneys and other administrators and so forth for input. But I appreciate the first reading as an opportunity to have a discussion and to hear from the community as well. So there are elements in here that Jorge Quintana reviewed and aligned as well with our registration process. And we will have the website link at the top for school of choice. So that's on the first page that outlines essentially the process and the ability for transfers and so forth. Where I think there, where the changes that we would really like to focus on is how and when students are transferring. So if we could take a look at that a little bit more critically tonight and the eligibility for that to happen. So if you pay attention here and direct our view to page one, regarding the three pathways to accommodate students' interest in choice. So we recognize that students come to our district, families reside in our district, are able to enroll in their neighborhood school. And we have quite a few neighborhood schools, as you know. Then students that enroll in their neighborhood may apply to transfer to another neighborhood school. So one example might be Henry Ford to Roy Cloud or Roy Cloud to Clifford, for example. Then we have another opportunity, which is a school of choice. And we have a handful of school of choices in our district, including Orion Alternative, our dual immersion programs, North Star and MIT. So what we'd like to outline is, and what is written in this board policy, is the process in which a student enrolls in their neighborhood school, requests a transfer to what we're calling a non-boundary school, and that's the language that's used on the website for a school of choice. And once accepted, the student would be expected to stay in that, at that school and that unique program for the duration of the program. And this really is especially affected in our dual immersion programs, where we staff and we project the enrollment for the duration and hire specialized teachers and so forth. And then students have the benefit of all of that knowledge and wisdom as they progress along. So in this board policy, it suggested that if a student chooses to leave that non-boundary school of choice program early, they may enroll and go back to their neighborhood school. So for example, a child enrolls at Adelante and then in fourth grade decides to go back to Henry Ford, which is their neighborhood school. That would be an example. Students who have attended a non-boundary school or program may not then subsequently enroll in another non-boundary school unless approved by the superintendent. So this provision does not apply to transfers to the non-boundary middle school, because most of our, actually all of our school of choice are currently K5. However, we do have the Adelante Dual Immersion Program in the middle school and then the MIT program specifically. So that, the MIT program is identified here. So that is a major, that's a major element I wanted to point out. So we can start with that discussion or read through. And I can then find out if there's any questions that you might have about the remaining paragraphs in here that point out the laws and changes and so forth as well. Go ahead.
I just had a couple of clarifying questions about it that I just wanted, I wanted to ask. So if a student with this policy, if they un-enroll from their non-boundary program, go back to their neighborhood school, is there a time duration that they have to remain enrolled? Or will they always need a superintendent exception to be able to re-enroll into another program?
So currently, the way it's written in this proposal is that they would need superintendent permission. Yes.
Always, okay.
Yes.
And let me just add to that, because we did have quite a bit of conversation about this and got input from various folks and stuff. So the thinking is that kind of, I mean, Wendy already covered it, that part of it is a staffing issue and a commitment to the school. And we know it's hard, particularly for the immersion programs, because you really need to, you know, sort of start in TK or K and go up with the program with Spanish immersion and with Mandarin immersion. And then it's hard to fill those spots after students leave. But our thinking, so we want parents and students to be making an intentional choice, that I am choosing Mandarin immersion, or I'm choosing Spanish immersion, or I'm choosing the Orion Alternative school. But we know that sometimes, for whatever reason, it's not a good fit, right? And so at some point, first, second, third, fourth grade, it's just not a good fit. And so we want to make sure they have an opportunity to go back to their neighborhood school, make room for them at their neighborhood school. And that they shouldn't then necessarily be penalized, you know, down the road if they want to transfer, if the superintendent thinks it's appropriate. But the idea is we don't want people sort of choosing one school that has limited enrollment and the inability to fill those spots and then go to another non-boundary school. And we know that that's happening right now, right? People are making choices and thinking about that, so it's just harder to staff. So the question is, you know, is that the best for the student? Is it the best for our district? From a resource perspective, from a district standpoint, it's definitely the best, best choice. Am I explaining that? Yeah. So, you know, with that said, we understand sometimes there's not, just not a good fit. So we're not going to penalize the student for that. We want to make sure that there's a good spot for them. And it may be that ultimately the superintendent in conversation with the parents decide that, okay, another non-boundary school is a better choice for your student in lieu of your neighborhood school. But we don't want that to just be the natural, because it is hard to then staff the schools out from year to year as the attrition happens at some schools and not others. Yeah.
Thanks. And just to be clear, I meant like, did they have to go back to their neighbor? And not whether they should go back to their neighborhood school or not. I was asking, is it, you need to go back for full academic year before you can get another program? And what I'm hearing is that there's not, it's always going to be a super, like even if you're back at your neighborhood school for four years, if that's, you'd have left pretty early, you'd still have to get superintendent exception to move on. The other one was, let's see, the other question I had about intra-district was the, oh, the dates changed for the enrollment. And I just, I just was wondering what the, if there was a reason behind that or, because it used to be November to January and now it's October to December. And I wasn't sure if these were related or if that was tied together or what the motivation was behind that.
No, and I, thank you. That was a great catch. I appreciate your attention to detail all the time. And yes, we'll make that modification. I noticed that at the last minute when you alerted me. Thank you.
Okay.
So it is, you're correct. It is November to January. Although I would consider just maybe a little bit more vague language, because sometimes there is a need to make some adjustments. So it might just be during the enrollment period or what have you. That might be a better suggestion.
It would be helpful, because sometimes we're in that crunch. And I'm talking to Jorge and is there any way that I can, he goes, nope, it already went out. Let it go. So I would think if we could make it vague would be very helpful in certain situations that may occur, being that we've had different types of legislation that has come down for different types of programs. And we get it at the last minute. And we're scurrying around to find where we can find place to put a program, because dollars are given to the district, but you have to spend it within a period of time. Would be very helpful.
Yeah, I agree. We could use enrollment period. And then if we wanted to define the dates and that, we could always do that, need administrative regulations, which are easier to change. And that's really a guidance, not a policy. So it's a good catch.
Thanks. I think that it's, you know, this is a good direction to be able to have students have to, you know, to have the ability for people to have flexibility to leave their school of choice if they, if it's not working for them. But do it in a way that's easy to predict and plan for. It's really hard when school districts and schools have to plan, you know, with just a few months, dramatic changes in population. Some of these programs are, you know, they have an expectation that there's a base, especially the language ones. They have an expectation of a base level of fluency, of academic fluency. And, you know, it, that's, it's a loss when those students leave that program. So I think that the the direction that this policy is in is the right one.
Do you have questions, Cecilia?
I don't have any questions. My only thing would be, I haven't enrolled a kid in a very long time. So do we make it very clear for parents to understand when those deadlines are happening, just so that they are aware? And, you know, it's not too late by the time they find out?
Yeah, so there's a variety of ways that the communication is sent out. But I have to congratulate Jorge Quintana, because our website, our updated website is, I think, much more clear and user-friendly. That outlines timelines, actually printed it out. You can visually see, just, I know the public may not be able to see what I'm holding up, but it is a printout of the need to register first, the step-by-step, the timeline right here. So there's clear direction on the website, but then also all of the communication and advertisements about the, for the process.
And he's also put, he and Michelle put together a graphic. I don't know if you've seen, if you've seen the graphic, it's on the website. But it's also, you can download it, because I have it in my office. I look at it when I'm looking for dates. And it's a really nice colorful graphic that a parent can follow really easily.
Cecilia, I do think that's a good point, though, that assuming that at, I guess we have a board meeting next week, and so that would be the second reading and potentially the approval of this board policy. And if so, I do think we're going to need to make sure that any, you know, everybody knows that who's signing up for schools of choice next year, right? So they know, they know the intention and the board policy. And that we'll just have to get that out to all parents. Right? I think, you know, I think one of the questions that is probably going to come up is, do you grandfather in anybody who's currently in the system who made the choice for an immersion program prior to this board policy? Or do you just say, no, this is it? And they'll all go through the superintendent, which I think is the way it's written now, right? So that's the only thing I know we did talk about in our committee. And ultimately, we decided just to present it as this and then, yeah, so I don't know if you guys have any thoughts on that or?
So Elisa?
Oh, yeah, please.
Suggesting, stating like effective, starting the 22, 23 school year and not to avoid confusion.
Yes. Yeah, yeah, good point, good point. So because some people have already now applied for schools and however, before they, particularly for the new ones that are TK or K, they need to know this before they then choose whatever school, because they may have, they may decide something else, right?
Well, and it is mid-year. We do have an opportunity for communication with the registration forms and the enrollment forms that happen traditionally in May. So I think that would be, this would be a great form to put out in user-friendly language. And then our traditional forms of communication, of course. Okay.
I just want to make sure I followed that right. So you're, as written, are you saying that this, this policy would affect people that are applying right now to school of choice? That just finished the application process for school of choice? Like, we might go back and say, sorry, you can't transfer? Or, and you wanted to get that clarified? Or you're just saying that anyone that's already in the program now?
I think that's a question, right?
Okay. One of the ones that, right? Because there's, depending upon the superintendent's capacity, there's not that many. And it is kind of almost worth having the conversation with people that want to have the transfer to find out what's, what really is their motivation behind it. And it might be something that's either a misunderstanding or something that's addressable. I know that there have been programs before that have talked about seeing a large number of students that want to transfer. And then after talking with the parents, they realize that actually, staying with their program is probably the better choice. And they end up staying. It might be too soon to do it for the batch that's already just applied right now. So if we were to, I don't know, I don't know. But that, I was thinking this would start effective, like for the next school of choice application process, but I don't, yeah.
Well, some of our parents do know that this is up right now. So you all know, we received this one email that I wrote a lengthy response to. And that person decided to go in a different direction because of that response and also because of this policy. Because, read the policy, well, saw it, you know, when it came out on, you know, Friday. And they made a different decision. And even though I, you know, gave that long response, they decided to go a different manner. So if that's the case, then we were thinking that this was going to go into fact, into effect this, you know, for those people who actually applied right now for the next school year.
I think we just need to let people know that.
Right. Yeah.
The application process was mid-January, right? I don't, I don't know when the notifications go out.
Well, some already went out.
Yeah.
Because you have a site that's already done it. And then there are notifications that went out for immersion programs. That's already done. And that one parent was definitely part of that. And after reading the policy, and even though after I wrote back to him, which you saw what I wrote, decided to change his idea, his mind. I should not say, he and his wife. So knowing that people are reading this and probably listening to tonight, we can definitely put something out saying that this is definitely going into effect for the 22, 20, 23, 24 year. 22, 23, yeah, that's right, 22, 23. Because they've applied, they've been accepted. So that's right now for the next school year. And that's our immersion programs, North Star, those letters are already going out. Orion as well, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, just one last comment. And I do think that Michelle and Jorge do an excellent job with communication. My biggest fear has always been that a lot of parents may not even know how to navigate a website. And so I know that they push the emails and the texts, and I appreciate it as a parent. So I would just really like for everyone to be informed.
Let me, let me give you an example. Maybe this will help you. Kathy, who, who works upstairs with us in the superintendent's ibada. So what we did for our MIT students, because they had to make a decision for Spanish immersion, for Mandarin immersion, for Orion, for every Hispanic person that completed the application and wanted to go and didn't get back to us, whether they accept or not, Kathy made individual phone calls to each parent. Each parent. Each parent, she was on the phone Monday, Tuesday, and most of this day, tracking those parents down either at work, at home, by text. I need to talk to you because this day is the day you need to let us know if you're accepting the placement or not for the next school year. So they don't fall between the cracks. We do our best. So Kathy took the whole time and made a personal call to each and every one of them. The reason why I know this is, you know, she sits right outside my office. I can hear the conversations going on. And every conversation was about a school of choice. They had received a letter, but they didn't get back to us by the due date. And the due date was Tuesday. And when we saw on Friday, the number that had not, that's when Jorge asked Kathy to start making those phone calls. And she did. And we got a hold of every parent, every parent.
That's great. And I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, so one thing that I would like to make sure we're all on the same page on is we're starting for this coming year, right? 22, 23. So all those parents will understand, especially, um, the bullet C. We've told them an informant of that or no?
We have not told them about bullet C at this point in time. It has not been approved.
Right. But do they know that it was even coming? Cause I think that's one of the things that we need to make sure that they understand.
Anything on a niche letter that I was for. How the previous person, previous standard I spoke about, the one that you got copied on the email, that person raising issue regarding this policy.
Yeah. So I'm okay if we started in 22, 23, but I think we need to start telling them that this is coming. Uh, if they want to have input or have their say, they need to be aware of so that they can voice their opinion at our next board meeting or send an email or whatever.
So what I hear you saying is that in Friday's communicate, we should put something out in the communicate so that everyone wear the mask so long they start coughing. That happens every time. Put something in the communicate on Friday indicating that this policy is going before the board on Wednesday evening. I'm talking a week from tonight, uh, in regard to school of choice. And there are some parameters and be aware of these parameters.
Yes. And if possible, if you could include those little graphics, uh, especially for the, uh, new immigrant parents that may be applying or some that are not, uh, some, you know, aware of when you look at bullet C, it's a lot harder to read than bullet A and B. So I would like it to be step one. This is what happens, especially for the parents. The children go along with what the parents want normally. But I want them to make sure that they understand that if they choose one of these places, they have to be sure. Cause that's their commitment. And if it doesn't, it doesn't work out and they're going back to their homeschool until there's the form to appeal to the superintendent or whatever.
Okay.
Just want to make sure that they understand that this is coming and they don't say, well, I've already accepted and you know, uh, what am I going to do now? I don't want to do that. So just so that we don't have to do extra paperwork and not know how many students we have in each class.
So, so, yeah. Um, so just to follow up on that. So just to confirm, have we, are, so in the first round then, families have already committed to different schools of choice, right?
Right. They hadn't till today.
Yeah. So the timing is a little bit off on this. So we may need to, anyway, I mean, you know, either we just go forward with it. But, but I agree. I mean, I think parent, we need to make sure that the community knows about this. Because at this point, it would only be, you know, we have the group of people who come to every board meeting and they read every board packet. But that's a pretty small percentage of our overall parent and student population.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yeah.
Just want to make sure I'm clear because we're saying effective 22, 23 school year. But are we stating that upon approval? So let's assume next time this, this board policy is approved. It actually would go through in effect, the next enrollment slash registration cycle that would begin November for the 23, 20 school, for school year. So that all the communication, this paragraph could be on the form. Is that what we're suggesting? Or are we stating that upon approval, assumingly in March, that those families that have chosen a school of choice right now are committed to this new, new language and information? In terms of commitment, that's what I, if you don't mind clarifying for me.
That's what I thought we were talking about.
Was the latter.
The, the 22, 23 school year, those that became, that the letters just went out to, they would be part of this policy.
Okay.
Yeah. And I don't have a problem with that. I just want to, because most of the parents that apply are, you know, they've thought about it and they really want to make a commitment, I'm hoping. But I think that we need to, um, have a grace period perhaps. I don't know. You, you need to count the students and put them in a classroom. So I don't know how that would work for you.
Right now for the students that have accepted, those are the, you know, we have space for those students. For each of those schools that are schools of choice at this point in time. You're talking about North Star, you're talking about Orion, you're talking about Mandarin immersion at Orion, you're talking about Adelante Selby. So we have those numbers and those numbers, those acceptances were based upon the numbers that we have space for at, to those school sites.
Right. What I was talking about is let's just say that all five of us decide that we're not going to McKinley, just for whatever. So now you're going to have five less of us at, um, whatever school it is. And now you have to reassign us back to our homeschool. That's the kind of, you know, if they change their mind. Because they didn't know about this.
Yes. Yeah. So I, I think given where we are in the process, if I'm hearing you, I mean, I think, I think what maybe what we're saying, we can confirm if this is that, that if this policy, if we approve it next week or whenever in the next month, say, that it would go into effect for 22, 23. But we want to make sure that the parents, particularly those TK and K parents that are just starting, or also the third grade parents that may be starting at a new school, that they understand this policy because I think there, there's still enough time that they could then say, you know what? Never mind. I actually don't want that school of choice. I'd rather stay at my neighborhood school. And then we would then fill from our waitlist those programs. Cause I think, you know, one of the things that we constantly hear is we know that Adelante Selby has a waitlist that doesn't get filled. And so then people take those spots and then they leave the school in a couple of years. So what could happen is maybe a parent says, you know what? Never mind. I don't want that spot. Because I'm not really committed to the program long-term or whatever. And so then we could fill it with somebody. But, but I do think they need, they need to know. And it seems to me they need an opportunity to say no, given that our timing is a little bit off of our normal timing. Would that work logistically for us?
It's not as many, um, I, I mean, there, there's definitely, it's a group of students at each school site. At some schools, it's smaller, but we could definitely get the information out to each of those parents, just like example.
Yeah. And probably most of them are just, they're probably going to stick with their choice. Right. But I, but I think they do need to know.
Right. With the calls that Kathy had, I said, there, I think there are maybe like three. I said, no, I've decided now I'm going to stay at my homeschool.
Okay.
Yeah. And that's what I, you know, like sixty calls. Right. Yeah. You just need to have the opportunity to say that, to have that choice.
And we're still close enough. We haven't, we're not staffing yet for the neighborhood schools quite yet. So soon though, right?
Yeah. But I think it's better for the program. If we know now, it's better for the students. So if we could do that, I'm okay with it.
So will that work?
But it's not going to require any, any except, any school of choice placement that has happened during this cycle is not, it's not going to require that it changes, right? Like if someone was in school of choice A and they applied to go to school of choice B and we approved it for already in this cycle, this policy doesn't change that this year.
Right.
In next year's application process, they wouldn't, okay. Great. Yeah. That's, that's, that's what I want to clarify. Okay.
And I appreciate the conversation. Thank you, the discussion.
Okay. So let's move on to the consent items. Can I have a motion to move them including 10.2, 10.3, 10.4, 10.5 and 10.6?
So moved. Second.
Over to 10.1, which is, uh, the adoption of resolution 25 that has to do with us being able to have remote meetings.
This is comes before you every month, just in case we have to revert back to not meeting as we are right now, but meeting remotely. And then it also helps you out if you ever have to travel or be on a road for business or anything like that. Or if you get sick, you can go from your home and you don't have to worry about putting a sign in your front door. There's a board meeting happening. In care of the Brown Act, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Any questions? No?
I was just going to use this item to say, I like this hybrid format. I mean, we were working, we've done it only a few times so far. It's really nice. I really like us being in person here, but I'm so glad that, you know, I don't know how many participants are in the audience and I thought that many, but at least they can come in and join in, um, without having to travel down here. And if they wanted to, there's, there's chairs. So, um, yeah, I, I like it. I just want to share that.
And I'll just add, I think we should thank our tech department for supporting us in this effort. So thank you Kyle and to his team. Thank you so much.
Can I have a motion to move this item?
So moved. Oh, no, you go ahead, Cecilia. And I'll make the second.
All in favor? Aye. And now we're on to board and superintendent reports. Wow. So let's see, let's start with Janet today.
Bear with me about quite a few. So let's see, we had a workforce housing meeting, I think times two to go over the feasibility study that's going out, I think tomorrow. Um, we had an RCTA climate committee meeting. Um, I attended the reclassification ceremony, which was really well done. I loved that. So thank you for that. Um, Maria and I met with Jorge to go over as website committee to go over the new website and make any suggested changes to that. Let's see, for the MTSS committee, the academic subcommittee meeting had a separate meeting. And then we also had the district leadership team meeting. So I had two of those. Elise and I had a wellness committee meeting with, um, Patrina. Yes. Um, she's fantastic. That was great. And then, um, let's see, we had a bond team meeting and we had a policy committee meeting. And I think that's it for me.
So I only have the reclassification event. And again, it was great. Um, and the other meeting I had was I met with Jessica Shade to kind of go over the nutrition. She wanted to let me know that she had reached out to, um, the community coordinators at Taft Hoover and Garfield. So the Bayside Schools. And so she has also, uh, reached out to some of the students and parents and just wanted to talk to me about, you know, her, what she had heard and the feedback that she got from them. And that's all I have. Mike?
Janet already mentioned the bond committee meeting. Um, I will say it was quick, but there's lots of exciting updates as these projects are kind of coming to close. They're even talking about students moving back into the class, the new classrooms, which I, it's like, wow, that's just amazing. MTSS, which was covered, I'm in the SEL subcommittee, subcommittee meeting. And so we had that as well. I actually only made the first half of the MTSS actual meeting. So I know I have homework to do, um, to follow up from it. So, um, I'll be, I'll be on that. Uh, the reclassification ceremony on the 24th, it was awesome. Congratulations to so many students. Really well done. I'm really excited to see that. And I think that's pretty much everything.
Alrighty. Um, yeah, I know the reclassification ceremony has been mentioned, but that's always such a special thing. And you did a nice job, Maria and Dr. Baker and the whole team who, uh, put it together. And it was always nice to see the principals, uh, there and all the families. So that was, that was really great. Did want to just add to what Janet said on our, um, workforce housing feasibility study meetings. And then also the corresponding bond feasibility study meeting, just so you know, because you might start getting questions or it'll be out in the community that the polling should start tomorrow and it'll be by texting and online and then follow up phone calls. But they have a whole process trying to connect with people. And I know that Dr. Baker and his team also helped provide various information and stuff. So, um, we'll share results as soon as we get them. I guess they're going to be in the field, I think for a couple of weeks. And then it'll take them about a week to digest the information. So soon. And we'll find out from the community, you know, what they think about going forward with the bond and, and that sort of thing. Let's see, I, I think it was just last week or the week before, in between our meetings. I, uh, was with CSBA. We had in-person meetings in Huntington Beach. And we had a day of board meetings and then a day of equity training, um, that was really amazing. Trying to think of the name of the individual. I'll have to get back. I think he was really good. I think he'd be a great guest lecturer at some point. He's out of UCLA. Gosh, I'm just forgetting his name right now. And then we had two days of strategic planning. And so, um, there are, actually the good news is that, uh, a lot of conversation about equity and what CSBA can do to support districts and our equity efforts, along with lots of other things, always funding and things like that. So there'll be more on that. We're still in sort of the initial stages, setting up for the next four to five years. And then, uh, the wellness committee, um, meeting, uh, actually a really good showing with all the partners as well. So that, that was good. And Patrina is doing a really good job. So we're going to be updating the wellness policy as needed and getting input from everybody on that. And then, um, the San Mateo County School Boards Association, they had a meeting, I think last Monday night. I don't know if anyone else was on that. But they're going to do three sessions on teacher and staff shortages. And the first meeting was really kind of setting the stage from a national and state perspective. And then Nancy McGee talked a little bit about our county and some of the pilot programs, like growing your own. I, I think we're participating in that. There was a lot of conversations about how can we support, you know, getting more teachers and staff working for us. And the next two meetings are going to be, I think, some on what additional advocacy we could do and what we could do working together. But, uh, there's information on that. Policy meetings, we keep having policy meetings. We're having more. So we'll keep bringing them to the board. And then finally, um, the last item is safe routes to schools. And, uh, there's been a lot of conversation about additional crossing guards that we need. And we're trying to get support from the city. We actually had, uh, one of the lieutenants from the police department, he attended the meeting today, which was really nice. So we're making that connection with them, particularly supporting the areas around, uh, the Sequoia Station, Crossing El Camino and that zone around James. And then Elwood and Brewster. And then they actually Redwood City together in the San Mateo County Office of Ed, they supported a student, a high school student has put together a proposal on cleaning up the Sequoia Station, like maybe a cleanup day around, um, Earth Day. And once they have more information on that, we'll get information out to the schools in case some of our leadership clubs or environmental clubs want to participate in that. But that's sort of the transportation hub where a lot of the kids are going into. So wanting to kind of clean that up from a safety and just cleanliness standpoint. And then I guess, um, I didn't quite catch the details and Dr. Baker, maybe you know more about this, but San Mateo County Office of Ed, they've funded, Redwood City, um, and it's through the safe routes to schools. And particularly, I guess Henry Ford and Orion are going to get some additional investigation. And they're going to try out some calming measures and some other sorts of things. And then if they work, they will, um, do them longer term. So there was so much going on in the meeting today. I didn't quite catch the specifics on it, but I thought that was good. I mean, it sounds like, um, Um, I don't know if those schools applied for it in conjunction with Redwood City. I'm not exactly sure. I don't know if you've heard anything about Henry Ford or.
I actually haven't heard.
Okay. Well, maybe I'll try to get more information and report back or, or you can. But, but anyway, the, the good news is it, there's a lot going on and I feel like there's been a lot more kind of money and just effort from the county and the city to help support us. So that's good. Okay, that's it.
Well, that was nice and informative. And I just want to say, thank you guys for working on the policy committee. Um, I really appreciate you guys doing that. I, I know it's a lot of work, a lot of work. So the things I attended to, uh, have already been mentioned, the reclassification was really. Uh, nice to see, uh, Leslie did a very nice job. And it was great to see all the principals and vice principals to passing it to each other. So that was nice. And the website, um, is coming along quite nicely. I'm excited. Uh, Jorge is going to have a presentation for the board as well. And, uh, as we, uh, move along and. There's, it's got a lot of potential, but we're going to start slowly so that it all looks uniform and people don't get overwhelmed and. We don't start going every which way again. So. But it should.
On the website, when we go now to the website, is that the new website? Okay, I, it looked different to me, so I thought so. Okay. And so then there's still some things being adjusted on that, but that is the new website. Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
Yes. And I must say, I really appreciate the principal sending us our newsletters because I learned so much about what's going on at the sites. And I love the photos because we don't get to go out and see the children. So. I really love seeing all the pictures of what they're doing and like the one hundred days of school and. That's just a lot of fun. Um, Dr. Baker?
Everything's been mentioned. Um, the workforce housing, I, I did forward the email, so you all have it. And if you have any specific questions, you can call myself, Janet or, uh, Lisa. But you are correct that survey starts tomorrow, I believe. And I believe we get a report back the first board meeting in March, if I'm. Right, 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 right. So I, I'm hoping, you know, that it'll all gel together. And so really pleased with what they were able to do in such a short amount of time. For us. So that's a big piece. And then, uh, we had a meeting with Stanford again today to talk, help us out with our. Math program list was there and so was, um, Kendall Artosa, who did a fantastic job. Of looking over the data and asking them to do things differently, uh, so that it's more understandable, not only for ourselves, but for our teachers and for. Presentations when we do the presentation. So I thought, uh, it's, you know, a really wonderful investment, having the teachers have special assignment. Yes, some of them, I should say, a lot of them have been subbing. I know because of this crazy time, but as we move forward. Uh, it's going to be great to get them back in the classroom and really model lessons, work with teachers, uh, and planning and so forth. So, um. She was just full of information this afternoon when we met with, um, Kendall in Stanford and she, uh, definitely opened up their eyes to do something a bit different. So that's it for me.
Hey. So next is twelve point one. Connect community charters first interim, uh, financial report. Of course, I forget. So once again, twelve point one, the Redwood City School District Review of Connect Community Charter Schools. First interim, interim financial report for fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two. Any questions or comments? No?
Priscilla's here if you have any.
Hi, Priscilla.
Hi, Priscilla. I didn't really have a, a question per se, but. Oh, hi. Now you're on our screen. Just a comment that, you know, their enrollment is, it appears that it's down. To a hundred and fifty students. Am I reading that correctly? I'm not sure. I'm not sure if it's actually a hundred and forty one. And no, I think it's a hundred and fifty. And then. Anyway, it's just, it's really gone down and I don't know if there's been any conversation with them about.
There has not been.
How, how, I mean, it seems like it'd be difficult to operate. It was difficult for us to operate. Close to even three hundred, let alone a hundred and fifty.
We have not had that conversation. As you know, they've got that extended period of time because of COVID. The only conversation that I've had with them is that, um, you know, they're on the site with KIP. And so they want more space. And I said, you don't need more space for the amount of kids you have. So.
Right. Okay. I just.
There's a meeting coming up that I'm going to have with, with the, um, director so that I can understand her concerns.
Yeah, I think that's an important conversation. That was just the one thing that stood out to me. I mean, financially, they seem to be handling it right now. But I just, you know, wonder how is it going and what they're thinking as longer term and that sort of thing. Good. So maybe that can just be part of your conversation then.
I just want to mention, Elisa and Dr. Baker about the enrollment. You will see that on our second interim that they project. That they are going to increase. That's why it impacted our property tax in a little second interim. They're projecting a increase in enrollment for the next two years.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Thanks to the, uh, CBO, uh, department for putting this stuff together. Um, the letters are really clear. That makes it really easy to understand the report. Um, and I just wanted to add on that I, I really appreciated seeing the ADA listed in the letter because I was looking, it's not in the report. So I wasn't sure where it came from, but it's, it's really helpful to see that, that kind of enrollment. Both for sort of measuring the health of the enrollment there, but also understanding the, how that affects their, their budget. Um, I'm glad that's, that was included in there. So thanks for putting these letters together. I know you do it three times a year, um, I think, uh, but. It's good to.
Okay, moving on to twelve point two, Redwood City School District Review of KIP Excellencia Community Prep First Interim Financial Report for Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Two. Any questions or comments? Twelve point three, Redwood City School District Review of Rocketship Redwood City Charter School First Interim Financial Report Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty One, Twenty Two. Any questions or comments?
The, the only other comment would be kind of similar to Connect. I mean, their enrollment is, um, higher. But it's still kind of on that three hundred bubble edge. It's a little lower than that. So. I don't know, just when you have, I, I mean, I think they've operated small for a while and I think. They seem to be okay doing that, but I just. I do worry. I mean, there's lots of stuff in the papers right now about other districts that are struggling with schools that are. Below three hundred, four hundred, five hundred students. It's just hard to sort of manage. But again, you know, their finances are okay. I know they, they have gotten loans from. Their corporate, their kind of mother rocket ship. So a, anyway, and there's not a lot for us to do, Priscilla. So thank, thank you very much. I just think it's something we have to continue to watch. So I just wanted to bring it up in a public setting. So we're all aware of it. Yeah. And I don't know, again, Dr. Baker, if there's been any, I mean, I think they're okay with their numbers, but I don't know.
Numbers, but, uh, they're, and Priscilla can help with this one. I believe they're also projecting to increase their enrollment. Next year, uh, from my talking, from my speaking with Ms. Gill about it, she was also concerned about the numbers, but they do have. An enrollment projection where they're going to increase next year. With the type of, um, communique and all the extra outreach that they've been doing. So. I know you've had that conversation also.
I mean, it's interesting because it's, in some ways, you know, we have the pie that we have. So. Schools all around us are having declining enrollment, including our own. So it'll be interesting. We'll just have to watch it the next couple of years.
We have to also remember, they don't worry about, uh, inter-district transfers or.
That's true. So they, they would take from other districts. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Across the bay and.
But we're not paying for those students. Yeah.
Well, thank you, Priscilla, and, uh, thank your staff for all your, uh, the work that you've done on this. And I would be interested to see if they do increase their numbers, how they did it, because as you've mentioned, everyone else is losing students. Some are even letting go of teachers already as well. So. Okay, moving on to twelve point four, information of San Mateo County Investment Fund. Any questions or comments? None? Okay, over to correspondents.
So we got the email that Dr. Baker was talking about around the intra-district transfer, but I think that I realized that only went to the North Star Forward Committee. So I don't think that Elisa, Mike and Maria have seen it. So do you want to forward?
I thought you were all on it.
Yeah, I realized that. That we were, it was just the two of us.
Yeah, it's together. It's all linked together. Yeah. Thank you for reminding me.
Yeah, I thought I just hadn't seen it yet. You know, I don't check before I get here since I'm, okay. And, um, we did receive several emails, uh, regarding the child nutrition services and the. Pilot program at, um. Where's the TAF Orion and Henry Ford for the chocolate milk removal? And. What else was that? Juice, right? I knew there was something else. And we had, um. Emails regarding the Mandarin immersion celebrations and all the activities they're doing for the new year. And I received an email from someone in Fiona Moss's office that also went to Dr. Baker. I haven't read it all, but it has to do with, um, saving money for, uh, college, I think for your children.
It's like two hundred and fifty dollars to start with.
And I think that was it for us.
I, I know that, I thi, I think jointly, we got some communication and individually, you may have, I know I got some communication on personnel issues. Yeah. So I think, yeah, I think some of those went to all of us and some of them went directly to me, but they may have sent them to everybody.
Okay, so fourteen point one, possible other business or suggested items for future agendas. We have enough. Okay, none. Fifteen point one, changes to the board agenda schedule. Do we have any, Elise? None? Okay. Wow, look at this. It's early eight o'clock. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Hi, thank you, guys.
Very good.